Mr. Hammond.
Kennericki has his hand up if it matters.
Looks like Joe is muted.
Bill.
Is triple, Mr. Triple? Can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Sorry about that for times with the thanks deep with trying to pinch hit by appreciate.
Thank you.
Read under first readings.
Resolution of the Sancho County Council declaring a portion of Sancho County an economic revitalization area pursuant to Indiana Code six dash one point one dash twelve point one dash one. Petitioner Unifrax LLC.
Rule number thirty nine twenty one is assigned to land use planning committee.
Bill forty twenty one in order to vacate a public way or public place located wholly within the unincorporated portion of Sancho County public way or public place located at that two hundred and forty three foot section of Bristol Street by the southern right of way. Line of Edison Road to the north lot fifty five of Elm Grove addition to the west and lot fifty five Elm Grove addition to the east. Portage Township, Sancho County, section six, township thirty seven north range two E petitioner Michael W. Denman. Twenty four eight nine zero Edison Road, south in Indiana. Four six six two eight.
Bill number forty twenty one is assigned to the land use planning committee.
Forty one twenty one in order to the Sancho County Council amending title fifteen, chapter one fifty four, the land usage of Sancho County Code. To revise setback in off street parking regulations in the U University District. Petitioner Sancho County Area Plan Commission.
Bill number forty one twenty one is assigned to the land use planning committee.
Bill forty two twenty one in order to amending and supplementing title fifteen land uses, chapter one fifty four, planning and zoning of the Sancho County Code is amended for unaddressed property of twenty three acres, more or less. Located at the southeast quadrant of Spruce Road and Early Road and unaddressed property of sixty acres, more or less. Located in the southeast quadrant of Edison Road and Elderberry Road together totaling eighty three point four two acres, more or less. From A Agricultural District to I Industrial District for dish petitioner Ward Living Trust with Thelma J. Truex and Laurel L. Kublick as trustees and life estate for Laurel L. Kublick.
Bill number forty two twenty one is assigned to the land use planning committee.
Bill forty three twenty one in ordinance amending and supplementing title fifteen land uses, chapter one fifty four, planning and zoning of the Sancho County Code is amended for property located at five four five oh six Buckeye Road. And five four six two zero Buckeye Road from A Agricultural District to our single family district petitioner Joseph and Christie Lenninger.
Bill number forty one twenty forty three twenty one is assigned to the land use planning committee. That concludes first reading for this evening. Next on the agenda, resolution. Bill number thirty eight twenty one. Court, will you please read the bill?
Thirty eight twenty one, a resolution establishing a cumulative capital development fund.
Petitioner.
Mr. President, counsel, I'll speak as petitioner. You have requested that the cumulative capital development fund be reset to its full rate of three and one third cents per hundred. It had only reduced to three a point zero three three two. But the goal is to keep it at its specific rate of three and one third cents per hundred on an annual basis. Therefore, this is a annual or biannual process. This resolution would reset that rate for twenty twenty two to its full rate. I recommend approval.
Thank you very much. Any questions from counsel?
Mr. Morton.
Mr. Katanzrath.
Mr. Dog.
Yes.
Did you plan to the public what somebody with an average valued home might experience with that change? From what it will be currently to what it what we're proposing tonight?
I'm gonna do that on my calculator right now so that I have a number for you. I'm gonna say a hundred thousand dollar home. Is that a good home for you?
It's probably a good average size or average valued home in our county, I believe.
And I'll say two bucks.
Ten cents.
Oh. They'll see a change in their assessment or a change in their cost with the cum capital development fund of ten cents?
It'd be ten cents if they were no if they were not at the tax cap. Most everybody in St. Joseph County is already at the tax cap and therefore they would see no increase.
Okay, so a ten cent difference. Thank you.
Any other questions from counsel? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing on bill number thirty eight twenty one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing on the public hearing on bill thirty eight twenty one is now closed. May I have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
A motion to pass bill number thirty eight twenty one was made by Councilman Nolan, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes, excuse me, yes.
Thank you. And a second it was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member in regard to bill thirty eight twenty one? Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Hi.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tullian.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzrath.
Yes.
Kennericki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
No.
And Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries eight one.
Thank you. Let the record show let the record state that bill number thirty eight twenty one was passed by a vote of eight to one. Next on the agenda are salary amendments. Court, will you please read bill number twenty two twenty one?
In order to amending order seventy six twenty, the same being in order to establish salaries and fixing the number of employees of Sancho County for the year twenty twenty one petitioner prosecutor.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. Morton just comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner. Is there anyone on the call from the prosecutor's office?
Mr. Morton, I make a motion that we send twenty two twenty one back to committee.
Do I hear a second on that motion?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Hi. Bill number twenty two dash twenty one goes back to committee. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number thirty six twenty one?
In order to amending order seventy six twenty, the same being in order to establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Sancho County for the year twenty twenty one petitioner prosecutor.
Mr. Morton just comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner. Again, is there any anyone from the prosecutor's office on the call?
President Morton, I make a motion to send this back to committee.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Close. The eyes have it. Bill number thirty six twenty one goes back to committee.
Okay, bill thirty three twenty one in order to amending order seventy six twenty, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Sancho County for the year twenty twenty one petitioner health department.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton just comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner. Dr. Ryan Hertz.
There he is. Yeah, Amy Rupee is on the phone as well, so I'm not sure why she's not being heard. And so I wonder if there might be a glitch here, but this is so this is Bob Winters, excuse me, Bob Winters, health officer. County City Building eighth floor. And what we are asking for is the. The. Temporary full time employees to run the. Help us run the vaccination clinic out for you.
Bill number thirty three twenty one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in app. On bill thirty three.
What's your passage?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Who 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 I'm sorry, who who made the first motion?
Mark.
Mark, okay, thank you. Motion to pass bill number thirty three twenty one was made by Councilman Katanzrath and the second was made by like three people.
Pick your pick.
Yeah.
Seconded by Councilwoman Hess. How about that?
That was good.
Any other comments from counsel on thirty three twenty one?
Mr. Morton.
Mr. Katanzrath.
I first learned of this from Bobby Krasinski, but there have been others, laypeople and people from the public, but. I've not heard one complaint from anybody about the operation of San Hedwig and what the health department's doing over there. And people I know are just going there to volunteer because they like helping out. And my hat's off to the health of our employees, Dr. Aner and his staff. I've heard nothing but praise for the work they're doing there and the quantity of work and the quality of work they're doing and. An exemplary service, I think, for others probably are looking to to how to how to get vaccinations done in a timely manner and to the public, but my hat's off to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I would make this I would make the same comments. I think experience over there has been excellent. And and also I think that we've been ahead of many counties in how we do this.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from any council person? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Hi.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tullian.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzrath.
Yes.
Mr. Kennericki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number thirty three twenty one was twenty one was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Court, will you please read the next bill, bill number thirty seven twenty one?
In order to amending order seventy six twenty, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Sancho County for the year twenty twenty one petitioner PSAP.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton just comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome. It's Ray Schultz, Executive Director of PSAP, Office of five eight two six six Downey Avenue. Requesting some to move some budgetary money to create position of training officer. I've provided you all with resolution from the options. From the executive board. This is a budget neutral move for twenty twenty one. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel? Hearing none will open the public hearing on bill thirty seven twenty one. Does anyone anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing on the public hearing is now closed on bill thirty seven twenty one. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion to pass bill number thirty one thirty seven twenty one was made by Councilman Krasinski. It was seconded by Councilman Kennericki. Any further comments on this bill from any council member? Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. File.
Hi.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Tullian.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzrath.
Yes.
Mr. Kennericki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number thirty seven twenty one was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next, we have a public.
Thank you, everybody.
Next, we have public hearing and public comment on fiscal matters. All financial issues were heard and discussed at our March twenty third, twenty twenty one committee meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Hearing none. Public comment is now closed. Clerk, will you please read bill thirty five twenty one?
Thirty, excuse me. In order to appropriating and transferring monies for the purpose herein specified for the several departments here enlisted in the Sancho County Government.
May I have a motion on bill thirty five twenty one?
Motion for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion to pass bill number thirty five twenty one was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Kennericki. Any comments from any council member on thirty five twenty one? Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tullian.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzrath.
Yes.
Mr. Kennericki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Hi.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number thirty number thirty five twenty one was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next, we have land use planning. Clerk, will you please read bill number twenty five twenty one?
In order to vacate a public way or public place located wholly within the unincorporated portion of Sancho County public way or public place located at. The first north south alley west of Brink Avenue bound by Elsie Avenue to the north, the east street to the south. Lots one ninety five to two zero eight of Lexington Park to the west and lots one twenty five to one thirty eight of Lexington Park to the east. Penn Township, Sancho County, section four, T thirty seven N R four E petitioner Brian Ramp. Thirty three sixty five North Halsted, unit twenty three ten, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six six one.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, bill number twenty five dash twenty one comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. This is Sean Klein with Area Plan Commission staff with offices on the eleventh floor of the county city building. Staff recommends approval of this petition to vacate an unimproved alley in Penn Township. We find that it meets all the criteria found in state law on which to base approval. The county has no intention of improving this right of way, and we've already vacated similar alleys within Lexington Park that would never be improved. It doesn't provide access to any of the abutting property. Currently, these properties abut on improved streets. And all of these abutting properties have been informed in this public hearing, and they'll have the opportunity to speak tonight and make their case if they feel that they'll be anyway aggrieved by this petition. Does not provide access to a church, school, or other public building or place. And it would not make use of a public way by this neighborhood any more difficult. So therefore, we recommend approval of the vacation. The petitioner is also on the line if you have any further questions for him.
Thank you. Any questions for area plan from counsel? Petitioner? Would you like to add anything?
I have nothing to add. Thank you for hearing it today.
Thank you. Any any questions from counsel for area plan? Hearing none will open the public hearing on bill twenty five twenty one. Does anyone anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing on the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion to pass bill number twenty five twenty one was made by Councilman Krasinski. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Tullian.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzrath.
Yes.
Mr. Kennericki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Hi.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number twenty five twenty one was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number twenty eight twenty one?
In order to amending and supplementing title fifteen land uses, chapter one fifty four, planning and zoning of the Sancho County Code is amended. For property located at five four five six five Sage Road from C Commercial District to A Agricultural District petitioner Area Plan Commission.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, bill number twenty eight dash twenty one comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner.
Hello, this is Abby Wiles. I am with Area Plan Commission. I'm the director. Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the seventh and eleventh floor of the county city building. This petition is located on Sage Road out in Olive Township. It is south of US twenty, north of Edison Road on the west side of the street. It's currently split zoned with the northern half approximately zoned. See commercial and the southern half zoned A agricultural. It was rezoned in two thousand and one. Subject to written commitments that required that the rezoning revert back to agricultural in twenty fifteen. Area Plan Commission staff recently became aware of the commitments and or less making the terms of cultural to Area Plan Commission. It came out of verbal recommendation, which more or less meant to let the existing commercial zoning remain in place subject to new written commitment. Allow the zoning to continue through May third, twenty thirty, or under other. A number of other conditions. The commitments were approved by the Area Plan Commission, signed off by the Area Plan Commission President and the property owner and forwarded to council's council last week, and I believe that you all received copies. So the recommendation coming out of committee is it's a little confusing, but to. With an unfavorable recommendation to allow the zoning to continue in place. Or to allow the C commercial zoning to continue. Through May third, twenty thirty, or under one of the other conditions that would require it to revert back, which is. The owner's voluntary retirement, any sale or transfer of the property or the death of the owner. And as part of the new commitments, the owner agrees to notify the Area Plan Commission if any of these were to occur. I believe that a representative of the or of the property owner is on to confirm that they're in agreement. Agreement with the new commitments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel? Hearing none will now open the public hearing on on bill twenty eight twenty one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone anyone want to speak? I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Bill Jonas. I am counsel for the property owner. We would ask the counsel to approve the written commitments, and I'm here to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing on the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to pass, Mr. Morton, so long as we amend or accept the written commitments as proposed to be a part of the ordinance.
Second.
A motion to pass bill number twenty eight twenty one was made by Councilman Katanzrath. It was seconded by counsel and Krasinski.
So I apologize. This is Abby Wiles, like speaking again. Just because of the nature of the approval, the original petition was to rezone from. C to agricultural, but the council, it's my understanding, wishes to keep the. Existing commercial zoning in place subject to new commitments.
I think I think Abby said it better than I did.
I apologize. I just I I know these can get confusing after the fact and want to make sure that that's the intent of the council.
That was my intent to leave the rezoning commercial subject to the written commitments that were presented to us by the petitioner and his counsel.
So so there's a there's a motion on the floor, subject to the written commitments made by Mr. Katanzrath and seconded by Mr. Krasinski. Any further comments from counsel? Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Yes, Mr. Katanzrath.
Yes.
Mr. Kennericki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski. Mr. K.
Yes.
Bobby.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. File.
Hi.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tullian.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number twenty eight twenty one was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read bill number thirty one twenty one?
In order to Sancho County Council authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds for the purpose of refunding the county economic development income tax revenue bond to twenty fourteen. And incidental expenses in connection therewith and on account of the bonds and addressing other matters connected therewith petitioner Phil Fasenda.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please, sir. Ma'am, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, bill number thirty one twenty one comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner.
Yes, members of the council, Phil Fasenda, two oh one South Main Street, South Bend. As as was discussed in the committee meetings, the the ordinance before you is a refunding of the county's outstanding ceded bonds. That were originally issued in the principal amount of nine million one hundred fifty five thousand dollars. The the principal amount with the with the retirement of the. The, the principal amount with the, with the retirement of the debt, the principal amount that is sought in the bonds is an amount not to exceed, for the bonds, is an amount not to exceed $6,900,000. The, the, these bonds are anticipated to be taxable bonds because the call date for the bonds does not take place until the end of 2022. So they can't be advanced refunded under current law prior to 90 days out from that date. As taxable bonds, even given the fact that they're taxable bonds with market conditions just six weeks ago or so, there was projected savings of three to four percent net present value, which would have on the high end, would have been somewhere around $300,000. $280,000 to $300,000 net present value savings to the county on the debts risk for these bonds. At, at this point, the market conditions are not as favorable as they were. And so the council is being asked to adopt this bond ordinance, allowing the commissioners to move forward with the refinancing if market conditions should put themselves back in a favorable place for the, for the county. Also, Steve Dalton can address any other questions as the municipal advisor on this transaction that I may not be able to answer.
Any questions from council? Hearing none, I'll open a public hearing on bill 3121. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on bill 3121. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Okay.
Motion to pass bill number 3121 was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Katanzright. Any further comments from any council member on 3121? Hearing our clerk, will you please take the roll?
Yes.
Yeah, pal.
Hi.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 3121 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number 3221?
3221, an ordinance of the Sancho County Council appropriating the proceeds of the Sancho County Local Income Tax Revenue Refunding Bonds, petitioner Phil Fasenda.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Mr. President, bill number 3221 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Mr. President, members of the council, this is simply the appropriation bill that goes along with the bond ordinance. We are seeking to appropriate the proceeds of the bonds, which would not have been included in your regular budget.
Thank you. Any questions from council for petitioner? Hearing none will open a public hearing on bill number 3221. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on bill 32, 3221. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to pass bill number 30, 3221 was made by Councilwoman Hess. And it was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing our clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Hi.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 3221 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number 2621?
In order to the Sancho County Council, many, Chapter 97 Fairhouse, County Code, petitioner Diana H.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please.
President Morton, bill 2621 comes at the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Yes, this is just to update the, our code for purposes of receiving federal funds.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, I'll open a public hearing on bill number 2621. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on bill 2621. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion to pass bill number 2621 was made by Councilman Krasinski, was seconded by Councilman Katanzright. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing our clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Or Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Hi.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
No.
And Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight one.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 2621 was passed by a vote of eight to one. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number 2721?
2721, an ordinance of the Sancho County Council, 2021 salary ordinance for employees for community corrections, Ducom Center of the County, providing a COVID-19 hazard pay stipend to qualifying county employees. Petitioner, Ducom.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please.
President Morton, bill 2721 comes at the council without a recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Thank you so much. I would ask the council if they would please consider my request for hazard pay. I had, as of our, our last conversation, 14 out of 42 employees who have contracted COVID wear a 24/7 facility without a quarantine holding cell. And as of today, I have three additional staff out, two positive for COVID, and one in quarantine. So those numbers are continuing to go up and we are working tirelessly for the criminal justice system to maintain the integrity of the facility and monitoring the clients. And it would be a great support for us. I did come to council during my grant presentation and asked for hazard pay. And at that time was, it was recommended for me to seek additional funding through the Department of Corrections, as that's where my funding is from. However, after the council deadline, that word from the DLC that they did not approve hazard pay for community corrections in 2021. So I am coming to ask for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing then, we'll open a public hearing on bill number 2721. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing on our close to public hearing on 2721, do I hear a motion?
Move some, move for passage.
Do I hear a second?
I would like to make a comment.
Mr. File?
It was my understanding that in, in view of the fact that we have thousands of people unemployed with desperate circumstances, that in 2021, we weren't going to put an extra burden on our people having to do with extra pay from people who already have full pay and full benefits. One exception was made on the basis of poll workers, on the basis that this wasn't the department of our government. And, and so I went with that idea. I had understood that hazard pay was to be an event that was going to happen in 2020, and that it was not to be extended into the new year. I would also like to remind you that as soon as we start to put hazard pay in the hands of a department of our government in 2021, the form, the line will form for every other department that would like hazard pay to also ask us for hazard pay. So on the basis of policy that I understood was agreed to by our council, that is, that we wouldn't take hazard pay on into the 2021 budget, I move that we, we disallow this item.
Well, Mr. File, there's, there's, there's a, there's already a motion on the floor for approval. And I'm, and I need to ask, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so now we have a motion and a second to pass bill number 2721. Any other comments from any council member?
Only question back to the council, you go ahead with this. How many other departments are you going to entertain for hazard pay this year?
Mr. President?
Mr. Kenarecki?
Thank you. To, to Dick's point, which, which is a good one. You know, certainly this request comes long after the initial deadline that we put on the department heads to, to seek this for their employees. I am personally in favor of this only because the reason this request is so late is because she did what was asked, which was to seek this out to the Indiana State Department of Corrections. Having not been awarded that, I don't think that diminishes the hazard that her staff encountered and continues to encounter, you know, from, from her report just now. So, so the way that I had viewed this, Dick, and maybe you consider it this way too, had the Ducom Center employees been part of the initial request, would we have voted in favor of providing them the hazard pay or not? Personally, I felt that we would. And the only reason why this is late is bureaucracy. So I still feel that, that they are deserving of this pay. They absolutely met the requirements that we all discussed at that point. So I think this is an exception. I, personally, I don't think that this, the department's coming to seek, they wouldn't have bureaucracy though. That's my position on it.
My comeback on that is, we worked with Nolan and others to come up with a total. We had to weigh many factors in coming up with that total. And so the, so the fact is that we, we paid out what that total was recommended to us by those that worked on it. And to me, the party's over and it's too late to start a new party this year.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Any other comments from any council member on 2721?
Yeah, I'd like to begin, Mr. President. This is Mr. Nolan.
Mr. Nolan?
To, to Mr. File's point, I've been a fairly stringent advocate for cutting it off, as he said we would. But I would also like to say that in Mr. Kenarecki's point, and I spoke to him earlier about this, that it is true that this request was made prior to the deadline that we, that we put in place. And it is not of Ducom Center's fault or Sancho County's fault that it didn't, that it didn't get answered until recently, and this wasn't able to be obtained. So I believe I'm going to advocate for approving this. But here's the caveat, I am not aware, going to ask in any other council person, if anybody's aware of any other entities, departments, or anything like that, that did submit a request in time, that for whatever reason, didn't make it to our plate. Leading up to, I don't think that there's an opportunity for this to happen next month and every month for the next six months with a different department, because I don't think anybody else will meet those requirements. This is the only one that I'm aware of that made the request within the time allotted, but the decision wasn't made prior to today. Is anybody aware of any others?
Thank you. Any other comments from any council member on bill 2721? Hearing our clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
No.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight one.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 2721 was passed by a vote of eight to one. Next on the agenda, we will address the renewal or change or rescission to ordinance 8520. May I have a motion on the bill?
Move for approval, or move to, uh, carry it forward to May 27th.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion to pass bill number 8520 or continue it to May 27th. It's made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Katanzright. Any further comments on 8520?
Mr. File, I'd like to make a comment or two. One, one item which I passed back to the council today was that the health department understands that under no circumstances will this be extended, be passed that date, okay, which is May 27th. Likewise, I would, as a councilman and perhaps many others, would like to also emphasize that same point. I will in no, in no way support an additional add to this date, to the date stated. And I'd also like to comment that we have five weeks and five days to that date. And if I thought, and this is a matter of each person's sincere beliefs, okay? I'm not trying to say other people's beliefs need to be like my belief. But in my belief, in my sincere belief, I believe that holding this for another five weeks and five days might save at least one life. And if it were to save at least one life, I'm willing to do the inconvenience of a mask for that slow, for that period of time. So we have a very, we're very close to the finish line. We have a very short period to get to the finish line. And we are not going to extend this past the finish line. Under those circumstances, I think it is something we need to do.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from any council member on 8520?
President Morton?
Yes.
Okay, back to what Dick was saying. Again, the reason I believe that Dr. Eintouris chose the date of May 27th is because that is a time when all citizens, all citizens of San Joseph County, 16 years and over would be, who are eligible or have the opportunity to be vaccinated, fully vaccinated by then. And that was the reason to allow the rest of the people to be fully vaccinated, those who choose to do so.
Thank you. Any other comments from any council member? Hearing our clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. File?
Hi.
Did someone want to comment? I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make sure that Ms. Hess's motion, she mentioned the date, May 27th. We probably need to add in there the year too. Would you agree, Ms. Hess?
Sure. 2021.
I second that.
Right, Mark.
Want to make sure we're clear on that.
Thank you very much.
Good point. So Mr. File is a yes. Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian? Okay. Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
No.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries 17.
Let the record show that bill number 8520 was passed by a vote of seven to two. Next on the agenda is unfinished business? Next on the agenda is new business? Next on the agenda is new business. Next is comments from the public on anything that is not on tonight's agenda.
Hi, this is Amy Drake from Granger. Um, I just want to talk today, um, I wanted to talk today about the authoritarianism of the experts. We've gotten very used to unelected officials telling us what to do, especially this year. The government trots out authorities who tell us that they are right, even though they are clearly wrong, and we all know it. They give us really bad advice, like lockdowns work, when we see that lockdowns have done nothing to stop the spread of COVID. The virus is usually picked up in households, but just yesterday, we heard the head of the CDC once again advising Michigan to lock down. Not only are lockdowns ineffective, they kill our economies, destroy our social lives, empty our churches, obliterate our schools, and wreck our physical and mental health. No wonder we have legislation right now at the state level to rein in our health authorities. They force us, free Americans, into mandates with no proof that they work. We've seen it close up and personal in St. Joe County. Dr. Einters, our local health officer, who is unelected, has pushed his own freedom-crushing agenda on the 272,000 people of our county. COVID kills sick old people. Barely any deaths have occurred under 50, about 10 in our entire county. But Dr. Einters didn't use common sense for science to come up with a virus game plan that should have done everything possible to maximize our freedom and minimize unintended fallout. Instead, he restricted all of us from the life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness that is at the very core of American life. He never tried to measure herd immunity in the county, even though that was the original carrot he held out for ending restrictions. Right now, estimates say 57% of people have had the virus and now have natural immunity, and 22% have been fully vaccinated. Those are massive numbers, but apparently, until we get down to zero deaths, we will not be safe enough. There will always be another variant to keep them in business. Our health authorities are almost always wrong, but they think that we are too dim-witted to make our own health decisions. Even though we live in America, we are being told we must measure our own risk, our personal beliefs is unilaterally, the staying power comes from the tremendous unwarranted fear that they've instilled into our entire population, even with the majority of health authorities are even elected official future. I hope that then not just the opinion of one tyrant, even elected officials have no power to fire. Thank you for letting us have the floor tonight, Raphael.
Thank you very much. Next, we have a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, Mike Hamon here, can I comment?
Yes.
I, um, I appreciate people who have a different opinion as to whether the masks work, or whether we should have lockdowns, or, you know, we can have disagreements on procedures, but I really deeply resent the way that, uh, Mr. Einters, Dr. Einters has been categorized as some sort of tyrant. I've gotten to know him quite well. I know that he, you can disagree with him, but he makes decisions based on what he thinks is in the best interest of the St. Joe County. Uh, he follows the Hippocratic Oath, and, um, I just find it really disturbing and upsetting when people, uh, kind of impugn his character like that. So I just, for one, I want to stand up for him and thank him for all he's done. We may not always agree on things, but, uh, you know, I think that he's, he has done everything that he felt he could do. He followed his conscience, and I'm sorry if that didn't follow life, liberty, and pursuit of fricking happiness, you know, for some people, but, uh, you know, he did what he thought was best, you disagree or not. So thank you, Dr. Einters, for your leadership on this, even if, you know, some people might disagree with it. I do appreciate it. As a person who had COVID twice and damn near died the second time, I appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, may I remind everyone on this call that public comment is for anything not on tonight's agenda? And the, the 85, Bill 8520 was definitely obviously about COVID, so I'm going to ask one more time, does anyone have any other comments on anything not on tonight's agenda? Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Mr. Murray, Kelly Havens wants to...
Pardon?
I think Kelly Havens.
Ms. Havens?
Yeah. Um, I, I don't know how anyone can talk about much of anything that's going on in the county right now without recognizing the impact of COVID. Um, I just lost $500 in income last week because two-thirds of my students, in an unprecedented action, took off for spring break. They've never done that in mass like that before, and that tells me that people are desperate to get out and move about and see people and be beings again. And I, I think we have to remember that whole side of being citizens in St. Joe County, that that means something too. Um, there's always going to be flu viruses. There have been coronaviruses for decades, and there will be more coronaviruses. Every year, they kill something like 150,000 people in the U.S. And this year, they, it killed more. Um, I think the numbers got kind of inflated because, you know, if anyone had, happened to have COVID and died of anything else, it got written up as COVID because then the hospital got more money. But that, that means we should have done like double what we usually do. What, what do we usually do? Nothing. We don't shut down anything. Maybe a school shuts down for one day because so many kids were out with the flu that the teachers didn't see the point in having school that day. But we, we don't change what people wear, or what businesses they can go to, or what businesses can even stay open. We've never done any of that, and all of a sudden this year, we did it all hugely. And I, I think we went from zero to 100 without thinking about what it would do to everybody. I'm just hoping that if you have an opportunity to back things off and give us back normal life, you ought to take that opportunity. So if like someone hands you a veto, you could maybe like not override it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on anything not on tonight's agenda?
I would like to address the council if I could.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, members of the council, fellow citizens. I, uh, I will, I do have some comments about COVID in general, but I will not...
Name and address, name and address for the record.
Uh, Michael Dunn. I live at 16506 Granger, Indiana. So I'll try to keep my comments more general, as I know you're trying to avoid the specific topic of the mask ordinance this evening.
No, we're not trying to avoid it, sir. This is, this is our protocol when we have public comment at the end of the meeting. We're not trying to avoid anything.
Uh, sure. I didn't mean that in a pejorative fashion. Uh, I apologize if it came across that way. So, uh, just over a week ago, the Rand Corporation published the results of a survey that they have been conducting from May to October, measuring public trust in various institutions. And one of those was the CDC. Uh, I'll, I'll share the link to this in the comments when I'm done speaking. What they found is that the CDC has lost an average of about 10% of trust amongst the public, with some demographics losing significantly more. So the end result is that the CDC has an average rating of only about a seven out of 10 on cumulative trust. I'd like to suggest to the council that one of the primary causes of this steep decline in the CDC's trust is that the public has come to see them as trying to control rather than educate citizens. Uh, as, as we all have seen, public officials, uh, across the country have relied on coercion and threats to compel citizens to act in accordance with their dictates, rather than providing them with the most current and honest information so that they could make their own decisions about what's best for themselves and their families. As a recent string of court rulings have shown, our rights are not suspended in a pandemic. We all have to remember, our local government officials, both elected and administrative, that government exists to protect our rights and protect the people they serve, and not to impinge on them in a paternalistic attempt to protect them from themselves. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Lisa Takonovich, I would like to say something.
Go ahead. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. Um, I'm, my name's Lisa Takonovich. I'm in Mishawaka, and, um, I'm a nurse. I'm an RN, BSN. I'm doing family caregiving now. I'm retired. Uh, I don't know if I could be in a hospital setting or whatever right now, wearing a mask all day, every day, which I feel is very detrimental. Um, the, I just want to make a statement. The pharmaceutical industry owns and controls the medical profession. What I want to know is why aren't more doctors and nurses looking into this experimental vaccine? And why aren't we asking more questions about the real detriment of wearing masks all day long and how it decreases immune system? Um, why aren't we asking more questions? What, um, that's, uh, what really happens to the body all day after forced, we are forced to wear a mask all day long, or who is being coerced into getting this experimental vaccine? And, you know, the doctors are asking the question, the nurses that are asking the questions are being censored. And, um, there are treatments for the COVID that are being censored also, that could prevent being hospitalized or anything like that. That's being censored because we are, we are politically being controlled, and that's true. And our voices are being censored, and we're not, we're not being heard for that. Um, so what I think anybody should ask and everybody should know is ask for the vaccine inserts when you're go to get this vaccine. Look and see what's in the vaccine and what the possible side effects are. There are people dying from this, and, um, also severe, that is being subgame again, get vaccine injured. One of your kids that are sick, have robust immune systems that you're trying to play with, then, then come back to, you know, see, see about that. And did you know that in 1918, it's been, and there's books about that? And COVID-19, another chapter in the history of deception and secrecy. That's what's exactly going on here, and I think more doctors and nurses should be asking questions about what we're trying to do to, um, humanity. And, um, we're supposed to be helping prevent illness and promote health. And, um, so the ones that are, are advocating for this, possibly they should, um, think about what they're doing, um, because they're going to be held accountable someday, whether in heaven or hell. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, this is Paul Harold from Garland, Southern South Bend. Can I, can I have a quick comment?
Yes, as long as it's not in regards to anything on tonight's agenda, which 8520 is the mask ordinance.
Good luck on that.
Yeah, sure, sure. I'd just like to say this, you know, and I understand the mask ordinance has been extended, and on May 27th, there's going to be a question whether to extend it again or not. And what I just would encourage the council to think about bef, uh, before voting to extend it again on May 27th is, is children, you know? Um, you know, I, I, I'm, I, I think we've been, uh, with this virus, we've been with this over a year, so we have very good statistics, um, from which we can draw from, and we can see that there is really absolutely no risk to children from this virus. Um, but what I guess I'm concerned about as a father of seven, uh, who have many other children who are my kids' friends, is I, what I see is very disturbing. I, I see the kids seeing other children not as friends, not as other human beings who can love them, but only simply as carriers of a virus. They see others as disease carriers, and I see this as something that's very, very, very bad. Do we want our next generation growing up seeing other human beings only as those who threaten them, as, uh, potential people who can infect them and kill them? Or do we want them to see them as, as people to be loved, um, as comrades, as friends, as fellow citizens? So I, I really encourage the members of the council, uh, before May 27th, please, please take into account the children of our community who are going to be leading this community through the next generation. What, what is their experience? What will their experience be like? How can we shape their experience? How can we help them grow into healthy, loving adults? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hello, this is Deborah Hancock. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'd like to make a quick comment. Uh, Deborah Hancock, Farmington Square, South Bend. I just wanted to, uh, share something that I found really encouraging. Um, I often get on indiana.gov and go to the COVID dashboard. Um, I know at the beginning of all of this, the whole talk was about the danger of hospitals being overwhelmed, which is what started all of the different restrictions we have. Um, but we are at a point now, we are absolutely in no danger of our hospitals being overwhelmed. Um, only 8.1% of ICU beds across the state are in use right now for COVID patients, and there are 79.9% of ventilators available across our state. So again, our hospitals are simply not in danger of being overwhelmed. Um, in our state as well, 77% of deaths have been in people over the age of 70. Um, and as we know, uh, most of those had several comorbidities as well. Um, but again, the fear mongering we hear so often in mainstream media about even younger people being in danger, the numbers just simply do not, uh, back that up. And I just feel there should be a, a limit to the government's involvement in our health decisions and restrictions in general. Um, if you just look at our actual data, there just really does not seem to justify, um, the restrictions that we still have. Um, and I would love, um, to see our health department focus on educating people on truly helpful health measures, um, just simple things such as vitamin D intake, exercise, healthy food, being outdoors, et cetera. I feel like our county would be, um, much better served by them focusing on that rather than fear mongering. Uh, but I appreciate you letting me speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ellen Rylander of South Bend. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, friendly reminder, you have three minutes, uh, to speak, and please, your comments, keep your comments on anything that's not on tonight's agenda.
Okay. My comments, hello? Yes, my comments are actually a little bit more about procedure, um, in, in part because of the subject matter of tonight's agenda. I was trying to look through today as to answer questions about why, for example, um, there wasn't any public comment on the issue that we're not supposed to talk about. Um, and I, I wanted to share that it was actually rather difficult for me to find the county rules online. I, I finally did find the rules of the St. Joseph County Council, and, um, I want to mention this, um, because to encourage everybody going forward. I know there are contentious issues out there that, um, and, but, but please, um, allow public comment, especially for, um, future considerations of the issue that must not be named. Um, the, uh, the cornerstones of the institution of the county council, the rules of the St. Joseph County Council include, in matters of public concern, there shall be maximum public participation to inform, to submit general opinion, to achieve wise and timely action. Um, and I just wanted to remind, just, just to make, um, to share that it's important for, for us, the public, to be able to make our voice heard. Um, and finally, and this is a very particular issue, but, um, in, in reading the rules, um, actually the state laws that you referenced, um, at least in the copy of the rules that I found, have been repealed. So that actually made it more difficult for me to understand procedurally what's going on, because I couldn't figure out what state rule your, your, um, was being referenced in the county council rules. So anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.